Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alonie Moore's Premium, Antay Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 63, Class 63. What did we learn in Class 62? Well, we're still going over the Act Algeciras of 1906, Chapter 4, right? And what is Chapter 4 really all about? It's about the Ka'dee, right? It's about the Ka'dee enforcing new taxes and the creation of new revenue, right? So the Ka'dee is coming in to support who? The Ka'dee works for who? The Ka'dee works for the state. The Ka'dee is an officer of the state. The Ka'dee is an office of the state, right? So therefore, the Ka'dee is working on behalf of the sovereign, and the sovereign is the state, right? So the Ka'dee is coming in now and creating new taxes and new revenues, right? And enforcing the Act Algeciras as it relates to some of the provisions that already outline some of the type of provisions we can enforce now, right? Such as 2% of all real estate transactions, right? Those type of provisions are already set forth. But let's talk about this other thing called the creation of new revenues, right? How do we create new revenues? Alright, so as you know already, in Act Algeciras, let's take Article 64, for example, right? So Article 64 talks about the fact that we can tax who? Trades, industries, and professions, right? Article 64. So what about industries? Okay, let's take, for instance, a company such as Lockheed Martin, right? Lockheed Martin, which is located in the jurisdiction of ANPAC's state, right? So ANPAC is the successor state. We've claimed our latitude, longitude. Now Lockheed Martin, as an industry, as a corporation, is now doing business in the jurisdiction of ANPAC. And guess what? Lockheed Martin has an annual sales approaching about 67 billion a year. 67 billion would be. But when they fill out their tax returns, right, as an S corp or C corp, right? They will show very little in taxation in terms of their profits. Most corporations, what are you taxing when it comes to their corporation? Their profit, right? But companies such as Lockheed Martin is smart enough not to reveal a lot of their profits. Matter of fact, they'll say they're top heavy in debts, right? They have a lot of debts and top heavy, top heavy in all these expenses, right? So they'll show very little bottom line net income, right? So what is it that the Moore states should do in order to get around these statutes that the IRS has enacted on behalf of corporations? Because corporations don't hardly pay any taxes. Everybody knows this, right? So how is it that the Moore states create a new revenue stream as relates to industries that aren't really paying any taxes? The reality is this. First of all, our Moore state governments have to enact legislation. The Ka'dee has to have its own codes, right? Policies that relates to taxation. So instead of trying to tax a company's bottom line net income, no, we tax the top line gross revenue, the gross sales, right? So let's take, for instance, if Lockheed Martin has 67 billion in gross sales, right? Gross revenue. Let's say we tax them at 1%, right? That is the legislation that the state puts together on behalf of the Ka'dee. The Ka'dee is now enforcing that legislation. Now if Lockheed Martin wants to do business in the jurisdiction of a Moore state, Lockheed Martin brings in 67 billion. But let's say now the new tax code on a company that's doing billions of dollars is 1%. 1% tax of what? Their bottom, their top line revenue, right? This is new revenue. Well, 1% times 67 billion is what? 670 million in taxes payable to the state. What state? The Moore state. That's what you call the creation of new revenues. Because Lockheed Martin is an industry in the jurisdiction of a Moore state, alright? So this is the type of things that the Moores have to understand. We have to enact legislation. And through that legislation, we can enforce it through Consular Court, right? Now, we've talked about the enforcement of Consular Court in Chapter 4. That's Article 59, right? So in Article 59 is the enforcement of what? Taxes, right? That's the enforcement of the tertib. The tertib was the list, right? So Article 59, as soon as Chapter 4 opens up, you go right into Article 59 and already talking about enforcing Consular Court for the tertib list. And guess who's on the tertib list? Lockheed Martin as it relates to the jurisdiction of ANPAC as an example, right? They're obligated to pay taxes because right now, they're not hardly paying any taxes to who? The chartered colony known as the state of Colorado, right? Because of the statutes, Lockheed Martin's not hardly paying any taxes, alright? So this is the type of themes the Moores have to start understanding. Who are we taxing? We're taxing the persons in our jurisdiction. Who are the persons? The artificial persons. And who are artificial persons? Corporations, right? That's why you look in your Act Algeciras, Article 64 talks about taxing who? Trades, industries, and professions. It's already in your treaty, alright? Okay, so let's move on. Obviously, we got the Constitution up, ANPAC as an example. All the Moores will need their own Constitution. One of the most important themes about your Constitution, other than having your three branches of government and your national trust, is your dominions, right? We're talking dominions right now. How can you tax a corporation if in fact you don't know where that corporation is now residing, right? Where is this so-called primary location? Well, if that location within your dominions, then how are you defining your dominions, right? So every Moore must have, in their Constitution, their outlined dominions. That's what your Constitution is really all about. It's identifying your territory, your dominions, your realms, right? It's about your permanent territory, right?
Your realm.
Realm, right? Your realm.
R-E-A-L-M, realm.
So it's all about your realms, right? R-E-A-L-M-S, realms, right? Okay, so as an example, here's ANPAC's jurisdiction. Because everything's about jurisdiction, Moore. If you don't have the dominions outlining your Constitution, then how are you claiming a jurisdiction? The jurisdiction must be outlined in your Constitution. For example, ANPAC's jurisdiction is what? "The dominions for Alonie Moore's Premium, Antay Colorado, now include all land, air, and waterways within latitude 37 degrees north to 41 degrees north by longitude 102 degrees west to 109 degrees west. Our earth's dominions are 380 miles long east to west and 280 miles wide north to south, with the geographic center point being at latitude 38 degrees 59.9 feet north by longitude 105 degrees 38.5 feet west. The total area of land and waterways is 104,101 square miles, 103,730 square miles of land and 371 square miles of water. The lowest point is 3,315 feet above sea level, known as Arkansas River, and the highest point is 14,440 feet above sea level, known as Mount Everest. These are the dominions from the center of the earth through our divine footprint until the farthest reaches of the cosmos upon which we thrive, through which we heal, and which we are restored." That is what you have to have in your Constitution. It's all about your geographical location, right? It's about your geographical location, Moore. That must be understood. Alright, let's go ahead and get on into Class 70, I mean, excuse me, 63. Okay, so obviously, in Class 62, we left off on Article 73. Now, Class 62, we read over Article 73. We had a nice clean read. So what we'll do today, I'll pick up, or should I say, I'll have the mother go ahead and start reading Article 73 again. We'll get a nice clean read from 73 to 76, and we'll go back and recap. That way, we can finish up with Chapter 4, the Act Algeciras of 1906. Okay, Mother?
Article 73. "The representatives of the powers take note of the Sharifian government's intention to extend to tobacco of all kinds the monopoly existing in the case of snuff. They reserve the right of their citizens, subjects, and proteges to be duly indemnified for damages which the said monopoly may cause, such of them as carry-on a tobacco business established under the present system. In case no amicable agreement shall be reached, the damages shall be fixed by experts designated by the Ma'zin and the diplomatic body in conformity with the provisions governing expropriation for public purposes. Article 74. "The principle of awarding contracts on bids without preference of nationality shall be applied to the farming of the monopoly of opium and kith. The same rule would apply to the tobacco monopoly if created. Article 75. "If the occasion should arise to modify any of the provisions of this declaration, the Ma'zin and the diplomatic body at Tangier shall reach an understanding on this point." Article 76. "In all the cases provided by the present declaration where the diplomatic body shall be called upon to intervene, except in what concerns Articles 64, 70, and 75, the decision shall be reached by a majority of the votes."
Alright, thank you very much, Mother. Right, so obviously, that's the ending of the reading. So so far, we've read over Articles 59 through 76, which is Chapter 4, but we'll go back and recap to go back to Article 73, okay? Alright. Okay, so Article 73. "The representatives of the powers take note of the Sharifian government's intentions to extend to tobacco of all kinds the monopoly existing in the case of snuff. They reserve the right of their citizens, their subjects, and their proteges to be duly indemnified for damages which the said monopoly may cause, such of them as carry-on a tobacco business established under the present system. In case no amicable agreement shall be reached, the damages shall be fixed by experts designated by the Ma'zin and the diplomatic body in conformity with the provisions of governing expropriation for public purposes." Okay, well, what's that all about? Alright, so first of all, you have to understand. The representatives of the powers, so who are the powers? The signatory powers, the colonists, alright? They take note of the Sharifian government. Who's the Sharifian government? The Moore's government. Intentions to extend to tobacco, right? So talking about farming, agricultural, right? To tobacco, all kinds of the monopoly existing in the case of snuff. They reserve the right of their citizens, subjects, and proteges to be duly indemnified for damages which the said monopoly may cause, such of them as carry-on a tobacco business established under the present system. So what's happening here? What's the most important thing you need to understand here? First of all, we're talking about a monopoly on tobacco, right? Agricultural. Why? Because the Ka'dee is responsible for doing what? Taxing it, right? So therefore, tobacco's being grown, Moores oversee tobacco farms, okay? But same time, we also know what is it that's going on with these tobacco leaves? They're making cigarettes, etc., harmful things, right? So therefore, at the end of the day, this is about indemnifying who? The use of these cigarettes, things that are harmful for people, right? Because cigarettes don't fall under pharmaceuticals, right? But tobacco by itself is not a harmful product. But something such as a cigarette may be harmful, right? But at the end of the day, what do you really see here? What we're recognizing, once again, the Moores are working with the colonists because we have to sit down and now negotiate with the colonists as it relates to farming, etc. Why? Because not only is it about governing the land, it's about taxing all of those farming things that they do, alright? That's what you gotta take away from this subsection, okay? Alright. Article 74. "The principle of awarding contracts on bids without preference of nationality would apply to the farming of the monopoly of opium and kith. The same rule would apply to tobacco monopoly if created, right? So therefore, the Moores oversee the farming of opium, the farming of kith. Kith is what? Cannabis, right? What else? Monopoly on tobacco. But at the end of the day, it's about taxation. It's about creating new revenues on these farming agricultural things. You see what I'm saying? Not only creating the taxes, but governing it based upon our law, right? Because it's still the usages of our land. That must be understood. Alright, so let's read again. Article 74. "The principles of awarding contracts on bids without preference of nationality shall be applied to the farming of the monopoly of opium and kith. The same rule would apply to tobacco monopoly if created." Okay, now, we talked about this principle of awarding contracts on bids, right? Who deals with that a lot, right? We talked about this before. Who deals with that a lot? Okay, here we go. GSA, right? So GSA deals with a lot, GSA is the General Services Administration that always allows their citizens to bid on contracts. And if their citizens win the lottery, right? To be able to get that contract, then they're awarded that contract to perform the services, alright? That must be understood. I could go into this much deeper, but you know, I'll do that another day as it relates to GSA. Those people out there, those Moore that want to do the background, understand how GSA works as it relates to awarding contracts, please do so. But we oversee GSA in these contracts, you see? Article 74. "The principle of awarding contracts on bids without preference of the nationality shall be applied to the farming of the monopoly of opium and kith. The same rule would apply to tobacco monopoly if created." Let's move on. Article 75. "If the occasion should arise to modify any provisions of the declaration, the Ma'zin, Moore's government, and the diplomatic body, the colonists, at Tangier shall reach an understanding on this point." Article 76. "In all the cases provided for by the present declaration where the diplomatic body shall be called upon to intervene, except in what concerns Articles 64, 70, and 75, the decision shall be reached by a majority of the vote, right? What's happening here? So Moores are still working with the United States of America. Why? You have to remember, Moore, we are what you call a bilateral contract, right? We're cohabitating in Morocco. So therefore, anytime we're not enforcing laws against the United States of America, it's good to sit down and enforce Article 24, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. And what does Article 24, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, talk about? A friendly application that sets up the arrangements. The arrangements are what? The mechanism on how you have this working relationship, alright? Because you always have to remember that the Sultan gave the colonists permission to erect buildings in Morocco. The Sultan gave the colonists permission to have agricultural things, farming going on in Morocco. But that's based upon them abiding by the Moroccan law, our legislation, alright? So we'll be working with them in the future in terms of how we deal with negotiations of mediation, arbitration, and adjudication as it relates to our legislation, alright? We're talking about that some more in the future. So now that we're at the end of the reading of Chapter 4 as it relates to the Ka'dee, right? What is Chapter 4 really all about? Let's summarize real quick, okay? Okay. So Chapter 4. The Act Algeciras, 1906, Chapter 4 is about Moore's constitutional state jurisdiction. The Ka'dee, new taxes, new revenues, a tertib list of persons, all caps, and persons as what? Corporations, etc. Deeds, habu properties, rental contracts, dispensaries, pharmaceutical drugs, awarded public works contracts, and the competent Consular Court judicial authority for any civil and criminal disputes between the competent Moore states and the United States of America, between the competent Moore states and United States International Organization, between competent Moore states and organs of the international organization, and between competent Moore nationals and foreign citizens of the United States of America and the United States, etc. So your Consular Court has jurisdiction over all these matters, right? But who's enforcing this initially? The Moore state based upon its legislation. And then the Ka'dee goes out and enforces that legislation. And anytime the Ka'dee now needs assistance in enforcing the legislation, because the Ka'dee has now issued warrants, right? Sanctions. So the Ka'dee is enforcing the legislation of the state, right? And so therefore, if the Ka'dee now needs to get remedy from the Consular Court, the Ka'dee can now petition the Consular Court to enforce its orders, judgments, and opinions. And according to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Article 20, the Consular Court will make the final decision, and the Moore state government will support that decision. That's how it works. You're utilizing your treaty provisions, right? Okay, so that's what Chapter 4 is all about. It's all about enforcing your treaties, Moore. But always keep in mind, you cannot enforce Chapter 4. You cannot enforce the Act Algeciras of 1906 as it relates to the Ka'dee unless you have acceded to this treaty. You cannot just put the word Ka'dee on a document and think it has judicial authority. It does not. What gives the Ka'dee judicial authority? The Moore state government. And what gives the Moore state government its authority? The Constitution. And the Constitution now sets up the three branches of government, and through the executive branch and the legislative branch, they can now come together and ratify and accede to the treaty, the Act Algeciras. And once they ratify it through their state, now they must deposit it and be promulgated with who? United Nations Charter, Article 102. And guess who else? You deposit it now with who? The United States of America, the United States, and the chartered colony, right? You let everybody know, you're now a contracting state to this treaty. Now you can enforce it, right? That's what this is all about, Moore, following the instructions. Okay. Alright, so as it relates to taxes, let's look at a reference point. Let's look at Res Judicata. Look at, let's look at well-set-up principles of international law, right? Let's look at precedent as it relates to international law, right? So we're all familiar with this case, right? This is France versus United States of America, 1952, the summary page, right? So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna read a little bit of this summary page to show you what the ICJ's final ruling as it relates to taxes in Morocco. What is the United States of America obligated to, right? Okay, let's go ahead and read a little bit about this, okay? Okay, Mother. I highlighted every.
"The right to levy taxes on nationals of the United States in Morocco. The question of fiscal immunity."
Alright, so that's what a part of the subsection's about, right? So when you're taking a look at the summary page, right? Now you're gonna go over to Section 5, okay? You'll go to Section 5. Section 5 will tell you a little bit more about these taxes that's already been ruled aboard, okay? Okay, Mother. Section 5.
"But subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded."
Okay, just a moment. Alright, so let's take it from the top, Mother. Let's take it from the top this time. I know I have that highlighted. Let's take it from the top.
"Unanimously, the United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless these laws had received its prior assent. There is, however, no provision of any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right, a right linked with the regime of capitulations, which can only exist as a corollary of Consular jurisdiction, so that if the cooperation of the United States Consular Courts is required to enforce a law, see 2 and 3 and above, and the assent of the United States is essential. But, subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded. If the application of a law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, any dispute which may arise therefrom shall be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes."
Alright, thank you. So what is this all about? So this subsection 5, right? Unanimous. This is the International Court of Judges, a court of justice, this is their final ruling. Summary. "The United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle..." What's the principle? The triple principle. "...were not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless these laws had received its prior assent." So the United States of America's saying that the Moores had to get, that the United States have to turn around and give the Moores permission to be able to enforce their own laws. Don't make any sense, right? But let's continue. Let's take from the top. "The United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless these laws had received its prior assent. There is, however..." This is the court. "...there is, however, no provision in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right, a right linked with the regime of capitulations, which can only exist as a corollary of Consular jurisdiction, so that if the cooperation of the United States Consular Courts is required to enforce a law, see 2 and 3 above, the assent of the United States is essential. But..." "But..." "But..." "Subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded. If the application of law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, any dispute which may arise therefrom should be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes." Now, what you have to understand is, the ICJ wrote this in terms of the summary, right? It's kind of bundled together, right? So what's happening here? You gotta really take the time to understand this because this is well-set-up principles. This is law, international law, right? Res Judicata, international law. So what's happening? So the first part is saying what? "The United States had contended that its nationals were not subject to Moroccan law, right? To Moroccan law unless these laws had received its prior assent." Well, then the court turned around and says, "There is, however, no provisions in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right." Just say what? What is the United States saying? Moores gotta get permission to enforce their own laws. So the ICJ said, "That's not true. Nothing in the treaty say that Moores have to get the United States permission to enforce Moroccan law." Okay, so then it moves on. It says, "A right linked with the regime of capitulations, which can only exist as a corollary of Consular jurisdiction, so that if the cooperation of the United States Consular Courts..." You see that? "The United States Consular Courts is required to enforce a law, right? A law." So what happened? You know when we went over the case, right? Since the Moores had acquiesced, and the treaty said that there must be a Consular Court. The International Court, International Court of Justice stated for the record that the United States could maintain a limited Consular jurisdiction of both civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moores, right? Remember that, right? So what ICJ's saying right here, if the United States is still acting in that limited capacity, it can still enforce its own statutes against the Moores. But it says, "However..." Watch this. "However, but..." "Subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded." What's happening? This sentence right here tells you a lot, Moore. When the Moores come back into competency, and they're longer, no longer acquiescing, and they start enforcing the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, they start returning to Morocco and consenting back to the Moore's government through application and renouncing any alleged naturalization status of the United States. Now that you become a competent Moore of your Moore state, and you also bring your former Moroccan subject name with you, as in Kendrick Johnson has now consented to the Moore state, as well as Kendrick Bay has to consent to the Moore state. When you do that, you enact your Constitution, right? Now, Consular Court now, right, has its obligation to enforce Consular Court laws. The Moroccan law is now enforced by your Moore's state government and not the United States anymore. So right here, the ICJ's saying, "Yeah, when these Moores wake up and they start to contemplate seriously about the fact they gotta enforce their own Moroccan law..." Okay, United States. Right here it says, "Anything that you say that is of contradistinction to international law of these Moore's treaties is ill-founded." The Moores don't have to get your permission to enforce not only Moroccan law, but the Moores can also enforce taxes against you, alright? Listen. Section 6. Mother?
"By six votes to five, no treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity for its citizens, nor can such an immunity, capitulatory in origin, be justified by the effect of the most favored nation clause, since no other state enjoys it for the benefit of its nationals."
Alright, we're talking taxation, we're talking Ka'dee, and we're talking state. State rights, right? Okay, sec- section six of the summary. No treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity. They have to pay the taxes, let's say it again. No treaty provides any basis for the claim of, of the United States to fiscal immunity for its citizens, you see that? So none of their citizens, none of their citizens. Are immune from taxation. Continuing, nor can such an immunity capitulatory in origin. Be justified by the effect of the most favored nation clause, since no other state enjoys it for the benefit of its nationals. So what you have to understand here in section six. The Kadi and the Moors state government gets to enforce chapter four of the Act of Al-Dusers. As it relates to taxation and the creation of new revenues, that must be understood. And none of the citizens, their subjects are proteges or persons such as. Lockheed Martin as a corporation are not immune from paying taxation. As long as the Moors put together legislation that says what they can do and enforce through their Moroccan law through the state. That's important to understand, okay, section seven.
By seven votes to four, as to the consumption taxes imposed by the Daher of February twenty-eighth nineteen forty-eight. These are payable on all goods whether imported into Morocco or produced there. They are not therefore customs duties, the maximum rate for which was fixed at twelve and a half percent. By the signatory powers of the Act of Al-Dusers. Citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others.
Okay. So, the citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others. What taxes? Maritime taxes, admiralty taxes, common law taxes, what is common law? Common law is law, land, air, and water taxes, right, law acronym, right? Land, air, and water taxes, right? And the United States is not immune from paying taxes as it relates to what? Okay, based upon this particular case of France versus United States of America, he's talking about these taxes, right? As to the consumption taxes imposed by the Daher of February twenty eighth nineteen forty-eight. These are payable on all goods whether imported into Morocco or produced there. They are not therefore custom duties, the maximum rate for which was fixed at twelve percent by the signatory powers of the Act of Al-Dusers. Citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others. We get to tax the citizens of the United States. We get to tax their subjects, proteges, we get to tax their trades, we get to, uh, tax their industries. We get to tax their professions, and we get to simply just create new revenues. That must be understood, this is the International Court of Justice and their final ruling in nineteen fifty-two. That the United States is not immune from the Kadi or the Moors state legislation, alright? Okay. Let's, let's, let's look at a little bit of history, right? We just finished up with chapter four and turns to the Kadi enforcing what? Taxes, right? New taxes and creating new revenues, right? But this is a long story as it relates to the colonies as it relates to taxes. The colonies do not like to pay taxes, and they certainly don't like the fact that the Moors have what? Consul court judicial authority over them. You must understand the main reason why the colonies had their revolution, they revolted against Great Britain. Is because Great Britain was extending their jurisdiction, their parliamentary procedures over into Morocco and overseeing the thirteen colonies. So what's that mean, they were overseeing them based upon their courts were extending all the way into Morocco with the thirteen colonies. Great Britain was still enforcing laws and taxing them, right? And that's why they started to revolt, but watch this. Let's take a look at, what's George Washington was talking about, let's take a trip down memory lane, shall we? This is very germane to what we're going over as it relates to chapter four of the Act of Al-Dusers as it relates to the Kadi, right? Cause the Kadi is responsible for enforcing the legislation of the state, but let's see what George Washington was talking about, okay? Alright, so, as Moors should be familiar. This was the letter of George Washington, C D Muhammad, right, so who was C D Muhammad, let's, let's identify the parts. C D Muhammad was who, he was an administrator. Sitting in the chair, what chair, the chair of the office, what office, of the central government of the empire. So his office, he was representing the office of the Sultan, right, the office of the government, right? Okay, so, New York, December first seventeen eighty-nine, since the date of the letter. Was the late Congress, by their president, addresses to your Imperial Majesty, so who was writing this letter? George Washington, keep that in mind, right? He's writing to C D Muhammad, let's start from the beginning, since the date of this letter, which the late Congress. By their president, addressed to your Imperial, Imperial Majesty. The United States of America, the party, have thought proper to change their government. And to institute a new one, agreeable to the constitution. Of which I have the honor of herewith enclosing a copy, what just happened? So first of all, you have to remember, before the constitution in the United States of America was adopted. They already had a constitution in place called the Articles of Confederation, right? So the Articles of Confederation was ratified in seventeen eighty-one and dissolved in seventeen eighty-eight, right? So in the midst of all that, the United States of America and George Washington, who was a general at the time, he decided to do what? He acceded away from the Confederation. And they started to put together a brand new constitution, they started drafting it in seventeen eighty-seven. They fully ratified it in seventeen eighty-eight, and after that, what happened in seventeen eighty-nine? They deposited and promulgated that constitution with C D Muhammad. You have to understand the instructions that he's following here. Listen. Since the date of the letter, which the late Congress, who's the late Congress? Articles of Confederation, they dissolved that in seventeen eighty-eight. By their president, addressed to your Imperial Majesty, the United States of America. Right, that's the party. Have thought proper to change their government and to institute a new one, so who's the new government? The United States of America, that's the new government name on the charter. And always remember, all of your constitutions are charts, okay? Agreeable to the constitution on which I have the honor of herewith enclosing a copy, so he sent C D Muhammad a copy. What's that called, depository, that's called promulgation. This is what the Moors have to understand, we have to enact the constitution, deposit and promulgate it too, right? This is what Moors have to do, this is what's called now restoring, restoring your latitude longitude of each territory. Through the constitution, the constitution is paramount, let's continue. This is about taxation, keep that in mind, this is about the Kadi, listen. The time necessary employed in this arduous task and the derangement occasioned by so great. Though peaceful or revolution, will apologize and account for your majesty not having received those red light vices. And marks of attention from the United States, which the friendship and mag- magni- mag- magnanimity, magnanimity. Of your conduct towards them afforded reason to expect. The United States having unanimously appointed me to supreme executive authority in this nation. Your majesty letter of the seventeenth of August seventeen eighty-eight, which by reason of the dissolution of the late government. Right, see they dissolved the Articles of Confederation in seventeen eighty-eight. Remain unanswered, has been delivered to me. I have also received the letters which your Imperial Majesty has been so kind as to write in favor of the United States. Let's stop right there. So the Sultan who's representing who, the empire, right? So the Sultan says he is in favor of the United States, who is really the United States of America. Right, the party. So right in the narrative, what's that called? So when the United States of America says Morocco was the first country to recognize the United States of America. It's because the Sultan recognized the United States of America. This is what George Washington's writing, right? Keep in mind, it's about the Kadi. So, to the bashal, the Tunis, and Tripoli. And I present to you, present to you the sincere acknowledgement and thanks. Of the United States for the important mark of your friendship for them. We regret, we greatly regret that the hostile disposition of these regencies towards the United States. Who have never injured them is not to be removed, who not supposed to be removed? Moors. Out of where, their own homeland, right? On terms in our power to comply with, what are they complying with? The treaty, the treaty that was fully ratified in seventeen eighty-seven, right? Treaty was fully ratified, the treaty was, treaty of peace and friendship was first signed by the Sultan in Morocco. In seventeen eighty-six. It was fully ratified with the United States of America in seventeen eighty-seven, okay? Listen. So within our territories. Within our territories, there are no mines either gold or silver. Within our territories, there are no mines of either gold or silver, what are you talking about? Paying rent. This whole thing is about paying taxes to reside in someone else's land. So George Washington's already disclosing right here now, man, I know I'm late on this rent. I'm going to catch it up, but there's no gold and silver on the east coast. However, he's gonna get into the however, okay, listen. Within our territory, there are no mines either gold or silver, and this young nation just recovering from the waste and dissolution. Dissolation of a long war have not as yet had time to acquire riches by agricultural, agriculture and commerce. But our soil is bound for and our people's industrious. You see why the word industry is in your treaty of the Act of Al-Dusers. Article sixty-four talks about taxing who? Trades, industries, and professionals. Let's start here. Dissolation of a long war. Have not at yet had time to acquire riches by agriculture or commerce. But our soil is bound for and our people industrious. And we have reason to flatter ourselves that we shall gradually become useful to our friends. How they gonna become useful?
Pay.
Pay taxes. That's right. The encouragement which your majesty has been pleased generously to give to our commerce with your dominions. What dominions, of Morocco. So the Sultan allowed them to set aside a reservation. So the Sultan had allowed the colony to set aside what? A reservation, a colony, a charter, right? This is what the Sultan allowed them to do. You have to remember now, what was the first so-called town? In Morocco that the colony set up, it was Jamestown, right? And he is sixteen oh seven, right? That colony was known more than about a hundred and twenty people. So the colony didn't have a lot of people. But yet the Sultan allowed them to set it up, and slowly but surely, more and more of them start coming over here. So this history started way back in the fifteenth century, sixteen, seventeenth century. But according to now, George Washington writing this, this particular constitution and them acceding to the treaty, right? Listen. We're talking about the Kadi, talking about enforcing taxes, George Washington's talking about taxes, listen. The encouragement which your majesty has been pleased generously to give to our commerce with your dominions. The punctuality with which you have caused the treaty with us to be observed. And the just and generous measures taken in the case of Captain Proctor made a deep impression on the United States. And confirmed their respect for an attachment to your Imperial Majesty. So the United States of America and the United States is an attachment to what? The empire. Cause your majesty, Imperial majesty, was sitting in the chair of a government, and that government is the empire. That must be understood. So the United States of America and the United States is an attachment to the Moors empire. That's what your treaty says. Continuing, we're talking Kadi. It gives me pleasure to have this opportunity of assuring your majesty that while I remain at the head of this nation. I shall not cease to promote every measure that may conduce to the friendship and harmony. Which so happily subsists between your empire and them. And shall esteem myself happy in every occasion of convincing your majesty of the high sense which in common with the whole nation. I entertain of the ma- magnanimity of wisdom and benevolence of your majesty. In the course of the approaching winter, the national legislature, which is called by the former name of Congress, will assemble. And I shall take care that nothing be omitted that be, that may be necessary to cause the correspondence between our countries. To be maintained and conducted in a manner agreeable to your majesty, we're talking about that treaty. And they also talking about this constitution, cause the constitution of the United States of America, Article six says what? They're bound to the treaties as the supreme law of the land. Let's continue. Let's start from here, between our countries to be maintained and conducted. In a manner agreeable to your majesty and satisfactory to all the parties concerned in it. So who's the party now to the treaties? Any Moors state that now what, becomes a contracting party to the treaty. We become parties, the Moors state governments become parties to these treaties, okay, let's continue. May the almighty bless your Imperial majesty, our great and magnanimous friend with his constant guidance and, listen.
Protection.
Protection. You have to understand something, Moors. The colonists, keep in mind, the word colonists is an action word, it, it has no face. The colonies were the British Moors as well as the pale-faced Europeans, right? The colonists, at a certain point. They needed protections, why don't they need protections? Because they left their mother homeland, Great Britain. And they didn't wanna pay taxes anymore to Great Britain. And they didn't wanna come under the jurid- jurisdiction of Great Britain's parliamentary procedures. So they revoked it, right? They rejected, and they renounced and denounced their nationality to Great Britain or any other European states they came from. The United States of America was a melting pot of British Moors, all types of Moors that came from Germany. Came from Portugal, et cetera, as well as pale-faced Europeans, a melting pot. And they wanted to name the United States of America as a generic name for all those different nationalities. But the reality is this, they de-nationalized themselves. When they no longer went under the nationality name of the land they came from. They immediately became stateless, stateless. In seventeen seventy-four. What happened in seventeen seventy-four, you have to remember your history, Moors. In seventeen seventy-four, they started to slowly but surely dissolve their charters. That gave them affirmative and extension to do business in Morocco, that Great Britain had set up these charters with the thirteen colonies. So between seventeen seventy-four and seventeen seventy-six, all thirteen colonies dissolved their charters they have with Great Britain. And when they did that, they immediately cut ties with Great Britain and any other European state they came from. And immediately they said, they don't wanna be known as British, they don't wanna be known as European, so immediately they became stateless. And when you're stateless, what does that mean, that means you're an alien, because you have no nationality. So what happened, C D Muhammad comes in and says, okay, no worries, I'll do what? I'll protect you. Go ahead and proclaim your independence, seventeen seventy-six, right? After seventeen seventy-six, what happened? Slowly but surely, they started working on their first constitution, they had it fully ratified by seventeen eighty-one. Articles of Confederation, which was a charter, right? Articles of Confederation, about the Confederation, but the Confederation didn't give them a nationality. They were still stateless, they just enacted a charter. And that charter was still more or less kind of connected to Great Britain. So what happened, George Washington turns around and says, man, this ain't working. We need to have our own nationality, we gotta cut ties one hundred percent with Great Britain. We need to have a nationality, what, what was that? We need to have a nationality. What, what was that nationality? They said now it'll be the United States of America and they call themselves Americans. And C D Muhammad turned around and confirmed and said, I'm cool with that. You wanna call yourself the United States of America? I'm okay with that. You wanna call yourself Americans? I'm okay with that too, as long as you do what? You pay two states. So they were from a stateless status from seventeen seventy four. And did not have full status basically until they signed the treaty in seventeen eighty seven. And enacted their constitution of the United States of America. And fully ratified, deposited and promulgated that constitution of the United States of America with C D Muhammad. And once they did that, then the empire recognized them as the United States of America. And that's why George Washington calls it a young nation. And they are obligated to still pay the taxes. We're talking Khadi, listen. Here's the constitution of the United States of America. And here's the constitution of the United States. Article six, right? Right? Two separate constitutions, similar language, okay? Article six of their constitution. Alright, here we go. Article six, all debts contracted engagement entered into before the adoption of this constitution. Shall be as valid against the United States under this constitution as under the Confederation. So right then and there, they're talking about two separate entities, right? So you have the Confederation of that constitution they had from seventeen eighty one to seventeen eighty eight. And then they have a brand new constitution, United States of America, that was ratified in seventeen eighty nine with C D, C D Muhammad, right? Then obviously y'all know in eighteen seventy one, they established a brand new constitution called the Constitution of the United States. Right? Three separate entities, but they don't, they don't wanna disclose all that here, right? Listen. Listen, all debts contracted and engagements entered into. So what was the contract? The treaties. And the treaties say the Khadi have every right to tax them. That's a contract, that's a debt. Cause who's the creditor? The sovereign state. The United States and the United States of America is always in a status of debtor. They are never the creditor. Who's the creditor? The Moorsh state governments in Morocco, more specifically in the empire of Morocco, listen. Clause two. Which the United States refers to as the supremacy clause. Clause two. This constitution and the laws of the United States which shall be made in pursuance thereof. And all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land. So what's the supreme law of the land? Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty seven. What's supreme law of the land? Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty six. What's supreme law of the land? Treaty of Madrid eighteen thirty six, excuse me, eighteen eighty. What's supreme law of the land? Act of Al Seris nineteen oh six, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Right? That's the supreme law of the land, not their constitution of the United States of America or the United States International Organization. Listen, so who's bound to enforce? This article six of their constitution. Two people involved. Two entities involved in enforcing this. Who enforces it? The Moorsh state government. Enforces the treaty provisions against the United States of America and the United States International Organization. The Moorsh state does that. Once the Moorsh state accedes to the treaty. Now you can enforce the treaty provisions against the United States of America. Cause the United States of America even said that the treaty shall be the supreme law of the land. So which means the provisions within the treaties is a supreme law of the land. Such as chapter four, articles fifty nine through seventy three that relates to the Khadi. New taxes, new revenue. This is what George Washington's talking about. Hey man, hey Sultan, I, I, I know I owe some taxes. We'll get that taken care of because we're under your protections. And when you come under somebody's protections, you owe protections monies. Period. Let's continue. So who else is responsible for enforcing this? Listen. And the judges, judges of the chartered colonies. For example, the chartered colony known as Colorado, right? As an example. Their administrative agents of that organ. Because the state of Colorado is not a state, it is an organ according to international law. The state of Colorado is known as an organ of an international organization. So the judges of that organ, what organ? I said example, the state of Colorado, right? Their judges in every state shall be bound there by anything in the constitution or laws of any state to the contrary. Notwithstanding, so what's happening? Their judges. Was supposed to enforce what? Treaty provisions. Who else is supposed to enforce these treaty provisions? Listen. Their senators. And their House of Representatives. Congressman. Before mentioned, and the members of the several state legislators. Governors, their senate, their House of Representatives of each of the territories. And all executive judicial officers. Who's executive judicial officers? That's your judges, right? Who else is judicial officers? Police, sheriffs, marshals, deputy clerks. County clerks, et cetera, officers. Both of the United States and of the several states. So who was obligated to enforce these treaties? First, they were supposed to enforce it upon themselves. Then they were supposed to do what? Abide by Moroccan law if in fact the Moorsh state government was enforcing Moroccan law against them as it relates to the Khadi, as an example. But the Moors could never enforce their own treaties because we were not parties to the treaty. Why are the Moors not parties to the treaty? We didn't have a state. And since we didn't have a state, that mean we didn't have a constitution. And the only way. To become a party to a treaty. The state must now accede to that treaty, must accept that treaty, must become a contracting party. To add your name to that contract. But now that we're coming back into the competency, competency of understanding Moorsh state governments, now we can enforce our treaty provisions. Now we can enforce their chartered colonies, right? Their municipal corporations. In the international law, they're known as organs of an international organization. We can enforce our treaty provisions against them and now what? What's happening now? Okay, let's go back to it. The citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others. Because we're now coming back into the competency because we're learning how to follow the simple instructions. Of the customary norms of international law. We hadn't been checking the boxes. But now we can enforce it and the ICJ backed this up in nineteen fifty two. This has been out since nineteen fifty two. We're in the year twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two, you know how many years that's been? Seventy years. Seven plus zero equals seven. Circle seven. Speaking of seven. Let's talk Federal Reserve. The Federal Reserve Bank, right? Which is a private bank, it's not a government bank. Cause everything that the United States is assessed to is all private, all of its private municipal corporations. I E chartered colonies. And in international law, the United States is known as an international organization. And all of its fifty trust territories are known as organs of an international organization. So let's talk Federal Reserve. Right? So the Federal Reserve is enacted in nineteen thirteen, right? Federal Reserve nineteen thirteen, the act of. Federal Reserve Act of nineteen thirteen, but, but don't get me wrong. The Federal Reserve's been around way longer than that. The Federal Reserve actually was established around eighteen sixty two. Abraham Lincoln established the first Bureau of, of, of Revenue in eighteen sixty two. But increasingly. The privateer bankers want to get access to it so the privateer bankers could run it instead of the government running the banks, right? As we talk about the number seven. How many board members are there of the Federal Reserve? Seven. There are seven board members over the Federal Reserve who are governing over the private bank known as the Federal Reserve. Which is what you call a regional bank. Seven. Seven. Now do you understand, okay? Do you understand now, Moors? When you look at a single note of the United States, Federal Reserve note, right? So it says at the top, right? Federal Reserve note at the top. Is there note? Was a note? Remember we looked in the definition of Black's Law Dictionary and definition of what? Remember random or note, it says what? Fake, fictitious, right? Fraud. So this Federal Reserve note, right? When you turn it over, all the Moors know about this. You look at the great seal, right? And the great seal, the pyramid, when you're turning upside down. Now all of a sudden, now you see what? You see a seven, right? The seven is like this. Right? You see the seven underneath the pyramid. What's that seven represent? What that shadow really represent? The seven members of the Federal Reserve. You have to look up this information, you'll see it yourself. Alright, you must understand what's happening. They're acting as trustees. Over the Moors' trust. And the seven represents the seven trustees that sit over the Federal Reserve. Cause the United States. Of America and the United States has been playing what you call a three-card Monte game. Everybody knows about the three-card Monte game, right? Find the money underneath the card. Most people lose their money. So the United States of America, the United States has now transferred the trust over to the Federal Reserve. Three-card Monte game, right? They moving around, who can find the money? Shell company game. Hiding the monies that belong to who? The Moors. They've always known that they owe taxes to the Moors. What type of Moors? Competent Moors. Competent Moors of what? A competent Moorsh state. That's been fully ratified, deposited, promulgated according to international law. What's happening? Listen. Here's the Treaty of Madrid. We're talking taxes, we're talking Khadi, we're talking chapter four of the Act of Al Seris of nineteen oh six. Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty. Talks about what? Yeah, it talks about it's so juror, Moors subject, mhm. But guess what else it talks about? Deeds. What else it talks about? Taxes. The word tax is in this treaty eleven times. Okay, let's check it out. Alright? The first time it's mentioned. Is in article three, tax. Okay, listen. Next time it's mentioned is in article four. The next time it's mentioned. Article ten. The next time it's mentioned is article twelve. And article twelve mentions the word tax four times. Where else it mention? We're gonna come back to article twelve. Four times, right? Article thirteen. It's mentioned three times, tax. Right? Tax. Let's go back to article twelve. Why am I going through this? Because the colonists always knew they owed taxes to the Moors. More specifically to the government of the Moors, the Moorsh government. It's always been in your treaties, Moors. We have never been poor. We just wasn't collecting the taxes because we were incompetent, because we acquiesced. What does acquiesce mean? We didn't enforce our own treaty provision because we didn't follow the instructions. Let's learn about these taxes that the United States of America has agreed to. Article twelve, mother.
Foreigners and protected persons who are the owners of tenants of cultivated land. As well as brokers engaged in agriculture shall pay the agricultural tax. They shall send to their consul annually an exact statement of what they possess, delivering into the his hands. The amount of the tax. He who shall make a false statement shall be fined double. The amount of the tax that he would regularly have been obliged to pay for the property not declared. In the case of repeated offense, this fine shall be doubled. The nature, method, date and appointment of this tax shall form the subject. Of a special regulation between the representatives of the powers and the Minister of Foreign Affairs of His Sharifian Majesty.
Uh huh, so you see what's happening? The reason why they keep creating these shell companies and establishing these several different trusts. They know they owe the taxes to the Moors. Their job the whole time is to make sure the Moors never knew their party name. They gave you the party name of what? Anomde gear, right? Known as what? Negro, black, color. African-American and Indian. Why? So you didn't know how to go back and enforce a contract, cause the contract talks about Moors. The contract talks about the empire. The contract talks about states. And the contract also identifies the other parties who's obligated to this contract, to pay what? Taxes. And they know that when the Moorsh state government, competent Moorsh state government and their competent counsel court. And their competent Khadi rolls up on the United States and all their private banks. And all their private industries and all their private trades and professions, they gotta pay those taxes. And if they haven't declared, guess what they gotta pay? Double. And if they repeat that offense again, they pay double of the double. This must be understood of why they keep fighting the Moors to act like they don't recognize us. It's because they owe you taxes and guess what else they know? That you have the civil and criminal jurisdiction over them. You must understand, they're right back to square one. When they was dealing with Great Britain, they didn't wanna pay taxes. And they want Great Britain overseeing them based upon their courts. They wanted sovereignty. But instead, they turn around, got rid of one monarchy and signed a contract with another called the Sultan in Morocco. They signed the contract and those contracts are enforced. And they are obligated to pay. And the most recent court case that we're familiar with on an international level is France versus United States of America nineteen fifty two. They're outlining the United States of America and the United States obligated to pay and they are not immune. Article thirteen.
Foreigners, protected persons and brokers owning beasts of burden shall pay what is called the gate tax. The apportion, apportionment and the manner of collecting this tax, which is paid alike by foreigners and natives. Shall likewise form the subject of a special regulation between the representatives of the powers and the Minister of Foreign Affairs. Of His Sharifian Majesty. The said tax shall not be increased without a new agreement with the representatives of the powers.
You see? Article twelve and thirteen are very powerful in here. It's all about taxation, Moors, and the Khadi and the Minister of Foreign Affairs was obligated. Through the competent Moorsh state government to enforce these treaty provisions. This is why the United States had to brand us as negro, black, color, African-American and Indian. Cause those people can't make a claim to a contract. Let's look at your other treaty. Act of Al Seris nineteen oh six. Chapter four, talks about what? Taxes. What else? Revenue. These are treaties that the United States, United States of America is trying to duck. But they're still obligated to it. Isn't that what George Washington said? He knows they're obligated. Why? Because the United States of America, the United States comes under the protections. Of treaty provisions of Moors. So everywhere in chapter four, listen, it's about taxes. Right? It's about taxes. Look, tax. It's about tax, right? Article fifty nine, it's about taxes. You see the taxes? Okay, taxes, article sixty, what's happening? Who's in charge of taxes? The administrator and judicial officers. Who's that? The Khadi and counsel court, right? Talking about these taxes and the list. Talking about these taxes and the list and talking about these deeds. What are deeds about? Taxes. They get a D Y. So they can register to pay taxes. Taxes, about taxes. Listen, chapter four, the Kaadi, listen. All right? It's about the Kaadi, right? Kaadi. Right? Kaadi. Kaadi is enforcing what? Okay. Taxes. Right? So the Kaadi is forcing what? Taxes for what? The Moors treasury. Of what? The Moore State government. This is why the United States of America, the United States is having a hard time trying to recognize Moors because they don't want to have to go back and pay those taxes retroactive, current, and future. All right? So this is about what? The Kaadi and the counsel court is forcing what? Taxes that's payable to who? The Moors treasury. Listen, chapter four, it's about what? Okay, it's about what? Taxes. It's about what? Habu properties. And what's a habu property about? Well, they're, yeah, taxes. Because if they're now residing, right? Holding on, possessing a habu property, they can't hold it as a deed, they hold it as what? A lease agreement. Which is a tax, right? Lease agreement is nothing but a tax. Listen. So it's about habu properties and the rental, the rental and contracting of the habu property if in fact they're occupying. We taxing, right? Listen, chapter four, the Act of Abcissars nineteen oh six is about what? Taxes. It's about taxing who? Trades, industries, and professions. That's your Article sixty-four. Who else you taxing? Foreign citizens, their subjects, their proteges, all their trades, all their industries, and all their professions. So chapter four is about what? Taxes. Chapter four is about what? Taxes, right? It's about what? Stank tax, transfer tax, weighing tax. Special tax, special tax? Article sixty-six? Let's continue. Act of Abcissars nineteen oh six, chapter four, the Kaadi and the counsel court is enforcing this. This is about what? Special tax. Right? Let's keep going. Right? What else are this about? Okay, let's keep going. It's about what? Export duties. What's a duty? Tax. Special taxes. About what? Anchorage dues. What's an anchorage due? A tax dues, duties. These are taxes levied against them. Storage dues, what's a storage due? A tax. It's creating what? Revenue. It's taxed. Right? This whole thing is about taxation, Moors. Chapter four is about taxation, right? It's about taxation. That's what it's about. All right? So now that we've gotten to the end of the reading of that. What we have to understand is Moors. We were never poor and never will be poor again. But who is actually poor? Ipso jure, Moore subjects are poor. You ever ask yourself, why do they have us in the ghetto? Why do they have us in the projects? Why won't they, they allow us to get jobs? Why do they treat us with such mayhem in the streets? Because they already know that you're wealthy. And they understand the audacity that you are so wealthy, but yet you don't know. So they dislike you because of who you are and what you represent is the fact that they owe you tax. And they know that you oversee the jurisdiction based upon all civil and criminal disputes. They know this. Especially the bankers. Always remember, Moors. Every time something happens where these bankers start to panic, it has something to do with your Moors treaties. You can go back and look at nineteen oh seven, the panic of nineteen oh seven. The bankers panicked in nineteen oh seven. Why? Because the United States of America signed the Act of Abcissars in nineteen oh six and half their stocks plummeted fifty percent in nineteen oh six. So the bankers got together in nineteen oh seven under what they call the panic. Look it up. The panic of nineteen oh seven. What was the next time they panicked? Nineteen ten. Why is that? Because they know that they owe the Moors taxes. So nineteen ten, what happens? The bankers, the legislators, the presidents get together on Jekyll Island, right? Between, on, in nineteen ten, right? To nineteen twelve, they're working on what? Putting together that privatized banking to enact legislation to take away the banking away from the government and now slide it on over to the private bankers such as JP Morgan. So the privateer bankers are now running a corporation known as the United States. So what happened? Nineteen thirteen, they create what? The Federal Reserve Act nineteen thirteen. Why? Listen. What happened in nineteen twelve? The Treaty of Fairs. When France signed a treaty with Morocco, what happened? Listen. The protected treaty between France and Morocco, signed at Fairs on March thirtieth nineteen twelve. What happened? Preamo, the government of the French Republic and the government of His Sherifian Majesty desirous of inaugurating a regular regime in Morocco based upon internal order and general security, which will make it possible to introduce reforms and to ensure the economic development of the country have agreed upon the following. What happened? See this inauguration? The Sultan put France in charge of being the officers of the empire. Listen. Definition inauguration. Mother.
The beginning or introduction of a system, policy, or period. The inauguration of an independent prosecution service. Synonyms, initiation, institution, launch, establishment, foundation, start, inception, commencement. The formal admission of someone to office. A ceremony to mark the beginning of something.
Okay. So what did Sultan do? He put France in charge of what? Economic development. What's that? Tax. Creating new revenues. They're going to enforce what? Their treaty provisions. This is nineteen twelve. What happened in nineteen oh six? They signed the Act of Abcissars, what? Chapter four, Kaadi. So in nineteen ten, Jekyll Island. The United States of America and the United States are trying to do what? Trying to get out of this Act of Abcissars obligations to taxes. They transfer all their obligations to a, to the, to the Federal Reserve of nineteen thirteen. But what happened in nineteen thirteen? Listen, we're talking Kaadi. We're talking taxes. Listen. Nineteen thirteen, here comes France. Uh, United States of America. Uh, you, what happened? The French Protectorate of Morocco relinquished me of extra territory jurisdiction by certain foreign powers attitude to the United States. What happened? So you, so France sends over its first diplomatic letter. January eighth nineteen thirteen. What are they talking about in this letter? What is France coming over? France is coming over to what? Yeah, man, uh, United States of America, y'all owe these taxes. And we want to talk about these ipso jure Moore subjects you're holding on to because the ipso jure Moore subjects are the golden goose. Because we need to hold on to the what? The asset. France wanted to hold on to the asset. The Sultan wanted to hold on to the asset and the United States was holding on to the asset. Listen. The assurances your excellency was pleased to give me heretofore as to the establishment of the French Protectorate in Morocco led me to hope that the federal government would see no objection to giving its adhesion to that instrument. They wanted the United States to adhere to the Treaty of Fairs. The French government would be glad to be assured. Your excellency, excellency, would note that under Article six of the aforementioned treaty, the diplomatic and counsel officers of France will be in charge of the representation and protections of Moroccan subjects and interest abroad. What was the interest abroad? Taxes. So France comes over and says, look, uh, we're gonna be in charge of taxes and we're gonna take over the protections of the ipso jure Moore subjects because the ipso jure Moore subjects still haven't woke up yet. They were still acquiescing and being Negro, Blacks, Colored, African-Americans, et cetera. So France is coming over to collect the taxes and oversee the golden goose, which is these ipso jure Moore subjects who had, who were in a shallow grave. What was the grave? Right here. We suffered from what? Cognitive dissonance. We let somebody else write our story for us in books. By the time they put us back in the classroom, they removed us from the classroom for a generation or two, put us back in the classroom and said, you guys are Black, Negro, Color, African-American, Indian, et cetera. And we said, oh, okay. So France is coming over collecting the taxes. Now, what's happening? The bankers are panicking. That's the reason why they formed the Federal Reserve in nineteen thirteen because France came over making claims. And they want a competent authority because the Sultan let France be the competent authority come collect the taxes. You gotta understand something, Moors. This is, this is deep. The Moors got every right, this is, as we start to wrap up. This is France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two. Page one ninety-seven. The Moors have every right to enforce what? Of the Act of Abcissars to enforce your counsel jurisdiction in Articles forty-five and fifty-nine. And what was forty-five about? Enforcing the banking in Morocco. We oversee all banks. And fifty-nine, chapter four, the Act of Abcissars, first article what? Fifty-nine, you get to oversee what? All the taxes, all the revenues, and the list. The list should be everybody on it that we should be taxing, including Lockheed Martin, who brings in sixty-seven billion a year in gross revenue and we should be getting somewhere between a half a point to a full percentage point of their top line revenue. So the Kaadi is very important. But there'll never be a Kaadi without us reserving the treaty. I am with that. It's long.